Now therefore, it is resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes the outstanding achievement of Bishop Rosie S. O'Neil as being named a service of sacred consecration to the office of bishop in the Conania Fellowship of Churches and Ministries in Pitt County, North Carolina, adopted this 25th day of March, 2013, signed by the Chairman, Mr. Jimmy Garris, and attested by the Clerk, Kimberly Hines.
Let the board say amen.
Thank you again. Appreciate you all. Here we go, y'all. I blinked.
Anything you want to say?
No, it's just a blessing to live in such a great county.
Wait a minute. You mean a bishop has no... And it's not going to preach a sermon?
No, I'm gonna let you go all this time, but thank you so much for considering it.
Very good. Well, I do want to congratulate you and your church for the work that you do. One of the things that impressed me as I read through that resolution, and also as I observed your ministry here in Pitt County, is that you are very much involved in our community. So many times, and I've been involved in church all of my life, so many times I conclude that we're very much involved in foreign missions, and sometimes we forget to look next door. And you are looking next door and doing a lot to support our community, and we appreciate that. Thank you very much, and God bless you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much again, and thank you all.
Amen.
We tell the mother. They bless me every time they come.
We shall continue with our agenda now, and we have four public hearings. The first one is a rezoning request, and Mr. Rhodes is going to present that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we do have four public hearings. The first three are zoning related, and as you've already mentioned, the first is for rezoning requests, and it's by Pamlico Engineering Services. This is for a property owned by E.R. Lewis located on NC-33 West, right at the intersection with Barris Construction Road. On the screen right now, you can see the location of this property. It's a rather large tract overall, only about two and a half acres, 2.44 acres, are considered for rezoning tonight, and again, right at the intersection of NC-33 West and Barris Construction Road. As far as our land use plan is concerned, this area is considered suburban residential. The darker green area here is also shown as area that's within the 100-year floodplain or natural resource conservation areas. The suburban residential areas within our land use plan is really intended for properties that are developing and are closer into some of the municipal areas, and you can see there's quite a broad range of uses proposed there. As far as existing land uses, there are residential areas in close proximity there at the intersection of Barris Construction, NC-33. Across NC-33 from the site is the inert landfill, E.R. Lewis landfill, that's been in operation there for about 15 years now. Also, there was a construction or concrete plant off Barris Construction Road, and you can also see a couple of other commercial areas shown in red on the map. As far as the zoning map's concerned, again, we do recognize the inert landfill across the road as a general industrial site, and you can also see another commercial site just up the road from the location. And the request, of course, tonight is to change the existing use or the existing zoning district to general commercial, and it is not for one particular use. This would allow any of the uses that would be allowed by our zoning ordinance in the general commercial district. And typically, the general commercial or GC district is to accommodate a wide range of retail service and office-oriented type uses. There are some conditions that came along with this or comments from a couple of our review agencies. Number one, NC DOT, many of you are aware, there are some improvements in the works for NC-33 West. It would actually run between Edgecombe County and Pitt County where there would be a four-laning of this facility. The plans are not finalized yet, so DOT, at least wanting to go on record, is saying that there is a possibility there need to be some changes with driveway entrances and some of the design work for the site plan. This site is also located within the water supply watershed area for the county. Most of you are aware, that is an area that extends 10 miles upstream of the water, surface water intake on the Tar River, and that area receives additional protection. In this case, since it is non-residential in use, the non-impervious area has to be below 36 percent. As far as our staff recommendation, we've looked back at our land use plan and given the location along a major thoroughfare and some of the other requirements that this site meets, we feel like it is in general conformance with the land use plan. In addition, the planning board reviewed it at its February meeting, and not a unanimous vote, but eight to two also recommended an approval of this particular rezoning request. So as far as the staff recommendation, it is quite long these days. This is additional language required through general statute where we also need to impress upon that it is to advise that it's reasonable and in the public interest and is consistent with the land use plan, so that's the entire language. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we're ready for the public hearing.
I now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this rezoning request?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there are two people signed up. Mr. Malloy coming to the podium as the first one.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Clay Malloy. I live in Northwest Takers Drive. I'm in District Two of Planning and Zoning. I do ask that this be approved due to we need more on north side of the river, and this would help the impact and cost of us coming all the way to Greenville when we can go right there for certain needs and everything. There are stores that have been there many years, and I feel like they will keep their loyal customers due to some that sell gas, lottery tickets and everything, and I feel like that they will still, you know, their business will not be impacted. And I have spoken with Pamlico Engineering today about the DOT. They were talking about it maybe set back just a little bit, back farther off the road to make sure it will if they do go with the widening, but we know that widening may go 10 to 15 years from now. So it will help generate more tax revenue and cut fuel costs for us, and I do hope that y'all go ahead and approve this matter for the betterment because we need everything we can north of the river, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to come forward and speak in favor?
I'm Marie Peeden, and I am the engineer with Pamlico Engineering Services who made the recommendation, working for Eastern Pride as the developer of this project. I'm here basically to answer any questions that you may have. Obviously, we've done the development work and tried to meet all the requirements of your ordinances, so anything that you may have, I would be glad to help explain if you have any questions or concerns regarding what we are planning to do there.
Okay. We have one question. Commissioner James?
Yes. I wanted to talk to James pertaining to the right of ways. All right, is there, can we have, you know, an extra lane that to turn in from Highway 33 and for the Barris Construction Road? The reason I'm concerned about that is past wrecks that have been that in that crossroads or at that place. Now, James, of course, he knows years ago, there was a store right on the opposite side from where you're putting this one, and I tried to get them in, but I said, why don't we go ahead and make this commercial and have it done, but they didn't want to do it. But is there a possibility now? And also, the site for E.R. Lewis right across there, there should be a turn lane to go up to that. There is a tremendous amount of trucks that go in and out of that, and they're all coming from Greenville, of course. None of them are coming from the Tarver era, but they're coming from the Greenville era, and it would be a safer, much safer for the era if we could have that. And I'm not, I'm just thankful that this place is going there because I'm like Clay, we need something north of the river. It will save those people gasoline, save them time and everything else by having a closer place that they can get these minor items that they do need in their home. James, what about that? You know, I talked to you about that and asked you if you would to please check on that for us.
Mr. James, when the site plan, again, we're just looking at it for general commercial rezoning tonight, the site plan will come in for whatever type of use goes there. There may be a requirement for deceleration lane, and in this case, it would be coming from the Tarver side. You'd have a lane by which you would turn right possibly into this site if DOT allows a driveway off NC-33. That's under debate right now. More than likely, the entryway is going to be off Barris Construction Road, but that's not to say you still wouldn't get a deceleration lane going into Barris Construction. DOT will make those requirements when we get the site plan under review.
I think for that business, you need a turn in from Highway 33 at the same time Barris Construction Road if you really, if they want it to grow and to, and we are hoping that other things will be there too. But James, we're hoping that that's going to be in there. You know that land, I'm sure that Harbor Ray would let you go on the other side there and do the same thing because that road needs to be, for safety reasons, we need those turn lanes. We really do, and I think you would agree with me. You go there, in the morning time, the traffic is backed up on it, I mean, 10 to 15 to 20 cars sometimes, and it needs to be fixed there, and now's the time to do it.
Like James has said, that comes about once we go to the site plan.
Okay, so that's the time we'll get on it. All right.
Right, right now, we're just trying to make sure we can get the zoning approved. But basically, what we do go through is a process of how much, what kind of traffic do you have on the road, and what kind of traffic does this development produce, and is it, you know, is it needed for the amount of traffic that this site would provide?
See, I can't understand why there hasn't already been a turn lane on the other side because you count all the trucks that go in there, you will see what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Chairman, here now, is that our move for approval?
Wait, we haven't closed the public hearing yet. Okay, is there any other questions that we need to direct to this person? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Is anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this rezoning? Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak against it? Okay, seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed now.
Motion for approval.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Let's vote. We have another public hearing on a conditional use request, and James, it's your show.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a conditional use permit request, so in turn, we'll need to have the clerk come and swear in anyone that would wish to speak on this particular item.
Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this particular request? If you do, please come forward and be sworn in.
And as we go through each time with the quasi-judicial procedures, there are a lot of different requirements that need to be met. Again, we're here to establish the facts of this particular case tonight. Everything that should be considered should be under oath. Also, there would be a detailed record of this proceeding, and any decisions to be, any decisions that are appealed would be to Superior Court. The conditional use permit is for parcel number 41542, and this is actually within a mobile home park located off Mills Road, and this is, the actual address is for the mobile home park space is 1916 Dixie Lane. The area here also in the land use plan is designated as suburban residential. Remember, the request tonight is specifically for residential daycare facility. This is not the commercial type of daycare. This is one that would actually be housed, the type of facility would be housed within a residential dwelling, and it's not, it's for less than nine children. In this case also, our zoning requirements are that it not operate more than our four round-the-clock type setting, and in this case, it will be from 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. the next morning, 23 and a half hours. So we just want to make sure that you are aware that wasn't a typo, that is actually 23 and a half hours. Here on the screen, you can see where this site is located. Again, to orient you, this is McGowan's Crossroad, Mills Road and Ivy Road intersection. Hollywood Crossroads just off the screen right here where DH Conley High School is located. As far as the county zoning, you can see predominantly it is rural residential. There are some scattered around sites in red shown as general commercial. Additionally, this is existing land use, and you can see predominantly along the roadways, residential, other areas primarily open undeveloped areas in green.
Eighteen.
As far as these types of facilities for residential daycares, there are certain development standards, security fencing, hours of operation that we've already mentioned, and we also need to go through all the different criteria as to whether it has an impact in the area. The first, whether it will materially endanger the public health or safety. Our staff comments, and you can also see the comments within your package tonight, we concur that it will not materially endanger the public health or safety of that area. Will it injure the value of adjacent property? We believe that it will not. Is it in harmony with the area? We believe that it is. And also, is it in conformity with land use plans and other plans for this particular area, and we believe that it is also. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we're recommending two actions tonight. One is to acknowledge that the conditional use permit is complete and is also compliant with all the regulations of the zoning ordinance, and in addition, approve it subject to these requirements, including all the development standards as well as the hours of operation. Since this is in a mobile home park, you probably noticed in your package, we do have concurrence from the landowner that this is an allowable use within the manufated home park. So we're ready for the public hearing.
Thank you. I now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak in favor? I don't think anyone has signed up. Anyone who would like to come forward and speak against? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
I have a question. James, do we have any more of this in Pitt County with this number of hours?
We have one other one that was approved about a month or two ago with those type of hours, and the intention here is they are trying to serve folks that might have some of shift work that might actually have childcare needs during the night.
Is social service involved in this?
No, sir. This is a residential daycare. It is not monitored by them.
At all.
Not to my knowledge, no, sir. In-home daycare.
Well, yeah, I know, but this is different completely than what the normal, that's the reason I wanted to know how many more was in Pitt County such as this because I had not heard of these before.
There are several in-home daycares, but this is the only one that's almost round the clock.
Only four hours, yes. That's what I was talking about.
Well, this is the second one, actually, not the only one.
This is the second one, yes.
Any further questions or comments? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Thank you. Our next is another public hearing on a zoning ordinance text amendment, and Mr. Rhodes, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have amendments proposed tonight concerning a new land use that has not been included in our zoning ordinance previously, and with the number of different inquiries we've had about the use of solar farms here in Pitt County, we feel like it's time to move forward to include that in our zoning ordinance. So in turn, we've had a request by Rams Horn Solar Center to have this language included, and it has worked its way through our planning board also for your review tonight. Just to give you an idea of what we're speaking of when we mention solar farms, and I'll give you a little bit more detail as we go through the presentation as well, but this is pretty much what you'll see on the landscape. This is a brand-new solar farm that was constructed up in Warren County, and a couple of staff members went up to view this site. What you'll see are a lot of different panels that are oriented kind of to the south or southwest to take advantage of the sunlight here, and what these panels do is absorb the solar energy, and there is a converter, also known here as an inverter, where it converts the solar energy into energy that can be used whether in our electrical system here or somewhere else. So this is just an idea of what you'll see on the landscape. A little bit closer up, these are typically stacked on a racking system, and you can kind of see, depending on where you're oriented, this is the backside that you may see pretty much looking from the north, and the opposite way, this is what you'll kind of see facing toward the orientation of the sun. Also, another type of improvement on the landscape you would see, this is the inverter area, and this particular infrastructure is where the energy is funneled into, the conversion takes place, and is then fed off the site into the energy grid for whatever utility company that's going to be purchasing it. So those are the types of, that's what you'll ultimately see if these are approved, and it would be a process by which we would go through the review of this depending on whether, what zoning district it's in. So with this included in our zoning ordinance, what we're proposing tonight, you'll see two different types of, two different types of uses. One is a solar energy facility, that is your solar farm. The solar collector accessory is actually what you would see probably on your individual home, just a smaller panel that you might want to have there. So the accessory part you can see would be allowed throughout any of the zoning districts. The solar farm, also known as a solar energy facility, would be a conditional use in three of the zoning districts, RA, RR, and general commercial. In those non-residential districts, highway, heavy commercial, light industrial, general industrial, they would not require a conditional use permit but only have to meet the development standards. What are the development standards? Pretty lengthy. This is a long section that deals with the development of these types of facilities. So again, where they're required, we just went through the different zoning districts. The height, in this case, we're saying should not exceed 25 feet, and what we've done as staff, we have compiled information from a number of different local jurisdictions. They're also new to this, so we pulled in several new versions and tried to appropriately put together information for Pitt County. So the limit on the height should be 25 feet. Use separation, this is a big thing. Typically, we talk about setbacks. We feel like it should be a minimum of 50 feet. Any of these improvements from the property lines? The inverter, the facility I showed you that actually converts the energy, does have a humming noise that would possibly be somewhat distracting the folks living nearby. We're recommending that that be 100 and 100 feet from any residence, and I should say 150 feet from any residence. The submittal requirements, a lot of information will come in on this site plan for review, a narrative about it. The site plan would show all the different access roads, the different property lines and so forth that we would typically see on a site plan. Standard drawings would also be required, any lease agreements, we'd need that as part of the package. Since this energy that is being converted would actually be sold to a utility provider, we would also want to at least know that the utility provider has had some concurrence about this project going in on their grid. Any other studies or reports would be necessary. Decommissioning plans, these facilities may last 20, 30 years. However, when they go out of business, when they're no longer in use, we do require decommissioning plan for those facilities, and a signature of the property owners of the facility if it's different than the landowner. Structural requirements, again, have to meet building code. You've seen these pictures just previously. These panels and so forth, and the racking systems have to meet state code for anchoring as well as the wind zone requirements. Certainly, the national electric code has to be met, and the electrical wiring, we're requiring underground except where it connects to the grid. Security fencing is required around the perimeter, screening also required, and there is an allowance for one relatively small sign not to exceed 32 square feet on the property. Abandonment, again, we mentioned about decommissioning part of that. We would also include language concerning the actual removal of these facilities after a certain point in time. And the other definition, a couple of definitions here, the accessory solar collector, again, as I mentioned, this is primarily for your residents or small business that might want to have some type of solar collector with, on top of the structure or beside the structure. We did not have a definition for that. And then your solar energy facility, also known as a solar farm, this is what we've just been mentioning. So as far as the project schedules thus far, this has been through the planning board review and did get a unanimous recommendation from the planning board at their February meeting. Public hearing tonight, and we're recommending an effective date immediately. And two motions that would go along with this, again, with the language that's provided, recommending an immediate effective date, and also an update to the Code of Ordinance book for the county. With that, Mr. Chairman, we're ready.
Thank you, James. I now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this?
Mr. Chairman, we have one gentleman, maybe him right there, signed up, Andrew Focal?
Good evening, Commissioners. Again, my name is Andrew Focal with Helios Sage. We're sole member and owner legally responsible for Rams Horn Solar Center, which is the applicant. Obviously, we're in favor of this amendment. This is our application. I wanted to kind of quickly go through a couple slides. Last time, I exceeded my time limit, so apologize if I'm moving quickly here. Quickly, background on Helios Sage, again, we are a solar energy development firm. We're based out of Charlottesville, Virginia, with about 400 megawatts of renewable energy development under our belt. We have several projects in North Carolina that are in similar stages and frankly, a little farther along than this project that we're proposing in Pitt County. Couple snapshots of what's going on in North Carolina, you know, people are probably scratching their heads a little bit why solar farms are all of a sudden becoming so popular in North Carolina, but really quickly, North Carolina has enabled, you know, an unbelievable growth here, and right now, the state is the fifth in North America for, in terms of megawatts installed, and that's about 150 megawatts and counting. It's really impressive. really impressive, 15,000 full-time jobs. Again, this is for the renewable energy market in North Carolina, but frankly, majority of that is solar, and about 1,100 companies and $3.7 billion in annual revenue. And again, you know, some of the benefits here for these solar projects, these are emission-free, clean energy generating projects that are creating jobs, local jobs, from engineering to construction to operation and maintenance, as well as creating additional tax benefit for the county. James already went through a couple photos here, but just quickly, again, this is a project we built in New Jersey. Just a couple things I want to point out here. One, the inter-rail spacing between these modules allows for Deener to actually rule these as not impervious surfaces. So, from our stormwater erosion control process is pretty streamlined, and these things basically allow the natural vegetation to grow as is. And so, when we're installing these projects on farms, typically in agricultural use areas, they go in very easily and they come out very easily. Again, another photograph, similar to what you just saw. Here's a solar farm image from a distance, and a little bit of a close-up on kind of what the system actually looks like. This is an aluminum or steel racking system that is post-mounted into the ground typically, depending on the soil conditions and the wind loads, six to eight feet in the ground, facing typically 25 to 30 degrees, facing due south. And then the modules themselves, about three feet by six feet, are mounted directly onto the racking system. So, again, no moving parts, pretty straightforward installation. A lot of this is preassembled off-site, and so the actual construction timeline for these projects is pretty small. These are the inverters. Again, this is really the only impervious surface that, aside from any additional roads that are, access roads that are installed in the array. This houses the two inverters and the 1,000 KVA step-up transformer. So, again, the voltage in these solar farms is never greater than the voltage of the electricity running down the street. And this step-up transformer increases that voltage to the, typically in Pitt County, it's 13 kilovolts. And that's all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
I do.
Commissioner Webb?
Thank you. Mr. Focal, will this electricity be sold to providers that provide Pitt County?
Yes, sir. So, the electricity is sold to Electric Cities. It's not sold directly to Greenville Utilities, because they have to purchase through their power purchase agreements, all their electricity from Electric Cities. So, our power purchase agreement is with Electric Cities. Our interconnection agreement is with Greenville Utilities.
And will this help bring costs down?
It's, it's sold at the avoided cost rate. So, it's sold at basically the same exact cost that it would cost the utility to go out and produce more nuclear power or more coal power, just instead it's green renewable energy.
And one last thing, excuse me, is because of the nature and the grants of these types of projects now, is there going to be any attempt to avoid property taxes on the land where this will be located?
The solar farm will increase the property taxes for this, for that area of the, where the array is going to be situated.
Commissioner Webb?
Thank you.
To further elaborate on that, they will, under the North Carolina general statutes, be allowed an 80% exclusion in terms of the value. So, if it's a million-dollar, for instance, investment, 80% of that would be excluded from taxation. Still have a net 20% gain that would be subject to taxes.
As it relates to the business personal property, the land itself and any building that might exist would be treated as normal, but the business personal property that produces the energy itself is subject to the 80% of the appraised value.
Thank you.
Commissioner James?
Yes, I have several questions. I'm certainly glad that Dr. Massey is here with us. I watched the difference between this and your wind, you meant your wind turbines. Go to the desk. Can you answer that for me?
Well, from a development perspective, it tends to be less invasive from a visual and aesthetic perspective. So, these things are much more, much lower impact. But in terms of electricity generation, solar electricity generates at peak times. So, when the grid demands the most electricity, when electricity is the most expensive to produce, that's when your solar array is producing electricity. So, it actually offsets the most expensive electricity that you're paying for.
Are you familiar in the reason I was saying, Dr. Massey, is because, I believe it's in the state of Kentucky, Highway 64, there are probably three miles of these, as far as you can see, going up into, ah, James, how many hundred feet do they go? You know, I talked to you about that.
Right, Mr. James. But the problem with the wind turbines here is just not the significant wind power.
It's not, it had to be put on the coast, I remember.
It really does. We don't see that being a realistic.
Of course, you know there's another one in the works in Pitt County. I assume it was anyway. Going back to your question, it will increase the tax value. Not only that, but because of the rent that they are paying to these farm owners, that will be listed, and it will up the county taxes too, Mr. Manager, by a great deal. Because the rent, I believe, from what I've been told, runs from 300 to 600 dollars, I think, or something in that category. We won't get into that. But I think it's a good thing. And I think, it looks like me, Greenville Utilities, I'm sure they involved in it. I want to bring that in, but I can't. But anyways, my hat's off to you. And I think Pitt Community Colleges are going to have to come in here, and they're going to have to do a little, get on that. Because this particular one in that state has a community college that has built the whole setup, and they're operating it by solar systems, believe it or not, every bit of it. It's run by solar. And I said when I went through there, I wanted to stop and go up to this college and talk to them and really let you know what was going on in other areas, and we need to be involved in that. But as far as lowering your tax, it's going to up the taxes for Pitt County. That's all I have to say. I think it's wonderful.
Commissioner McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sir, how many jobs would that create here in Pitt County?
It's hard to say. And typically, you know, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. It depends on the project size. And I know that, you know, we're one of several developers that are interested in looking at projects in the county. So, I'm not aware of how many other projects are behind ours. But, you know, what's happening is, it's creating an industry from, again, from the engineering side of it. You know, we're using engineers, local engineers already for our initial assessments. That's civil, electrical, mechanical, structural, environmental as well. But then also through the construction phase, these are all local organizations and firms, and then through the operation of maintenance as well. So, it's substantial, and I think that the statistic that I know is that per megawatt, solar employs more people than any other energy option out there.
Final question. What's the three major reasons why you think we should approve this?
Good question. It's, well, I would say, one, it's creating emission-free, clean electricity that's offsetting normally what additional fossil fuel generation would need to be supplied for the grid. Two, it's creating additional tax revenue. And three, it's creating jobs that I think are going to be important for this community.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Carlson?
Did I understand, when you were answering a question to, for Commissioner Webb, that you would sell electricity to Electric Cities at the same cost that they were getting other electricity from fossil fuel generation? And is that what I understood?
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me what your cost per watt is? Or is, when you build this, you set it up, there's usually a calculation where you have a cost per watt. Would you, could you share that with us?
I can give you an approximate cost of about $2 to $2.25 a watt.
Is that not like eight times higher than fossil fuels?
No, it's not. I mean, we're talking about kilowatt hours.
Are you talking about it being subsidized? Because a lot of times with solar energy is, it's subsidized cost. You may be talking about subsidized, and I'm talking about not subsidized.
Let me back up. I think maybe what we were, you were asking what kilowatt-hour price or kilowatt install cost? Because a kilowatt-hour price is easier to compare to maybe what you're paying on your electricity bill. And that's going to be, depends on if it's off-peak or on-peak, but between four and eight cents per kilowatt hour, and that's the avoided cost per the federal qualified facility rate. So, it's what Progress Energy sets their avoided cost rate, and then Electric Cities adopts that same.
I'm not sure that I follow your answer entirely. Is that saying that it is subsidized, though?
Yeah, oh, sorry. To answer that question, yes. Solar energy as well, as well as every other form of energy that's produced.
You are aware that the legislature is changing the 2007 law, which states that power companies are forced to buy 25% of their electricity from renewable resources, and that in all likelihood is that's going to be no-cost subsidy. How does that jeopardize or your program?
Sure. That's, that's actually separate from the process that we're under. So, this is a, what's called a FERC qualified facility rate. So, basically, federal law was passed in the 70s that said that any independent power producer that can produce electricity with clean electricity at the same price that the utilities can produce their electricity, the utilities are obligated to purchase it. It is totally separate from what you're referring to, which is the renewable portfolio standard in the state. And that does help the project for sure. But the actual value of that renewable energy certificate is pretty small. So, it's not going to be affecting our projects.
All right. I have no further questions.
Commissioner Hammond, did you have a question?
Thank you, sir, for coming tonight and explaining this to Russ. And I have asked some questions, but you have seemed to answer all of them. Our motion approval.
We've got to close the public hearing first.
Can I?
Yes.
Mark, that's one. Okay. I was, I'm totally in favor of this, and I'm so happy that hopefully this is just the beginning. I had an opportunity to visit an area out of the country, and there was not one building, one house, one place that did not have solar energy. They're brand-new buildings, everything that was going on. And they learned it from us 20 years ago, 30 years ago, I guess. And we just are beginning to get on board, and here we are. We're still not ahead of the pack. We're, so I'm grateful that you're here. One question. I assumed that as the earth turned, that you'd have to turn the panels, but you said no movement at all.
That's a good question. And there are designs that have what they're called tracking systems that track the sun as it goes from east to west in the day, and there's also...
Sounds almost like science fiction, but still.
Right. I mean, it's a very simple motor, but essentially, it just, it creates, it costs more to install. So, it becomes a cost-benefit analysis that is kind of right on the tipping point now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Owens?
Sir, what is the projected usage of land? How much land are you projecting on this predicted project?
Well, originally, I think we were talking about close to 100 acres, but I think we're looking at downsizing the system from that.
What is your initial investment for the project?
Well, it's going to depend on the final size. But typically, for a, what we call a five-megawatt project, which is pretty standard and is what James went to visit, that's about a $12 to $15 million investment. And so, depending on what the final size of this project will be, will dictate what the final cost.
Now, you mentioned that there were other entities that were probably interested in the same type situation, but is, would that have prompted why you might downsize on what you originally thought?
Well, it's a little more complicated than that. But basically, with Progress Energy and the Duke merger, the, what we're talking about before, the qualified facility rates, those standard rates are changing. And so, basically, anything over five megawatts, basically, you have to go negotiate those rates with the utility versus it's a standard fixed contract below five megawatts, which is why.
Wouldn't you project that this type of industry would bring forth the anticipation of making electricity competitive cost or cheaper? Which would you say?
I think that fossil fuel costs are going up, and solar costs are going down very quickly.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
I'd like to tell them that we've got a good community college here when they need some training.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak against this proposal? Saying none, I declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure?
I'd like to make a wish.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve, and that covers both of the emotion, both of the motions.
And this adds this amendment to our zoning for this particular thing, which we did not speak to.
We did not have this use included.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was clarified.
Immediately, so.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have one final public hearing, and that is on our flood damage prevention ordinance. And Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, we're switching gears over to the flood damage prevention ordinance now. Many of you are aware that North Carolina is, was the first state that actually had a contract with FEMA to actually update its own floodplain map. So, we're very fortunate here in North Carolina and in Pitt County to have that here locally. With that, we've got several different panels that have been updated, and the effective date for this, it's been through a long tedious review process and appeal process. The effective date has been set by FEMA as April 16th, and that being next month, of course. The panels that are affected, these are not the only ones that you'll be hearing from us in the near future about. Probably within the next year, we'll be bringing all of these to you. But the ones under consideration tonight are basically the ones that are affected by the updates in Green County. So, Little Contentia Creek, of course, it pretty much forms part of the boundary of Pitt County and Green County. Those panels that are along and affect that particular drainage basin are being updated here. And it includes, your agenda package says 45 panels, actually it's 26. And so, with those, each time these are updated, we do need to go back in our ordinance and actually cite the date in here for these effective panels. And we also have added, based on information from FEMA, additional language to talk about future revisions, and also when those would have to be approved within six months after being provided by FEMA and the state. Again, we do have another date that we also need to adjust within our ordinance in Section 4103, and again, reflecting April 16th. Just to give you some quick examples of what these maps do, this is downtown Griffin. And you'll remember that we provide administrative assistance for the flood damage prevention ordinance in several communities here in the county, several municipalities, Griffin being one. Downtown Griffin has long been a contentious point of where the floodplain boundaries lie. These are the old maps, and you can understand why. We've got four or five different colors working, a lot of different delineations right there in the downtown area. This is the new map. And again, much easier to administer. The red line, the red area shown is the floodway. You cannot build in that area without a special study being conducted. The blue area is the 100-year floodplain. And as you know, we've got a two-foot freeboard. If you build any improvements in that area, it has to be two foot above the base flood elevation. The blue lines that you can see period- The blue lines that you can see periodically in here are actually the different elevations, the base flood elevations, as you go up or downstream. Another example, existing panel here, this is off the old 264A heading toward Farmville. And what you see here, you can see a vast change in the delineation. And we also have some reductions in the base flood elevation, which would affect how properties would be developed in that area. So with that, Mr. Chairman, again, all of these 26 panels are being considered tonight. And to stay in good standing with FEMA, we do need to have these in place by April the 16th. And in turn, our certified floodplain manager, Brian Jones, is here. He and myself will be going out to the other three communities that are affected, that being Fountain, Aiden, and Griffin, within the next couple of weeks to get them to update this information as well.
Very good. I declare the public hearing open. Is anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this? Anyone who would like to speak against this proposal? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board? Okay.
In that era, nothing would be the same, because that's one of the worst hit eras, as you know, that we had. More people involved at any of these places that you're talking about?
Right now, if there are any changes, it would be only minor changes. Most of this is on the area adjacent to Green County. So we're really not going north of the river to speak of in this particular update.
Have we changed the floodplain in that particular era, James, any?
In north of the river?
Yes.
Well, they were updated back after Hurricane Floyd, yes, but not since that time.
I took notice and read it, it was, you said 1982, 83. That was before the flood that we had out there.
That was the very first set, but we have updated them since that time.
In that particular era?
Yes, sir. Believe it was 2004 when we got the complete set back in after Hurricane Floyd.
It was 2004. I, let me ask one of the people a question. Along the Conida Creek Basin, which is where we had a great deal of flooding, and we still have flooding there, that is identically same that it was back then, as far as putting up mobile homes and so forth.
That has not changed recently, and that was one of the detailed study areas we got in 2004. So it stands to reason that's still in place. We didn't see a need to go back and change that or have an additional study done to that this time. Again, this information provides a lot more detailed study for any of the streams that didn't have that information previously.
One more thing is which I cannot understand, Alpines. How many of you know where Alpines is? There's thousands of acres of pines owned by many different people. It's, it's, everybody always said it was low land. It never flooded during the big flood. In other words, that's the high, one of the highest parts in Pitt County. And, uh, but just county history, so to speak. A lot of people don't realize that, I don't think. I didn't realize it until we had that flood, and it didn't flood anywhere there.
Okay. Any further discussion? May I have a motion?
Scare's, I'd like to move that we adopt the proposed Pitt County flood damage prevention ordinance amendment.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
And Mr. Chairman, I would like to mention that also includes a motion to update the code of ordinances, too.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Good job.
Thank you.
Next meeting, we'll try to have five public hearings. Okay, let's move on to the next item on our agenda, which is our public addresses to the board. Do we have anyone to sign up?
Mr. Sir, we have one person, Clay Malloy. I believe he left unless he stepped back in.
He, I believe he spoke at the beginning. Do we have anyone else sign that?
Other than that, unless.
Do we have anyone who would like to address us? Come forward, please. State your name and your address.
I'm Dr. Harris. We have had a long, hard battle on our tax department. And I want to give you some information that'll help you. I talked to a very dear friend of mine, and he said, before you go public with this information, give these people a chance. He specifically said, you, Chairman Owens, because you're a licensed attorney and you know the, the federal guidelines very well. So I wanted to share with you something. You're given a printout, probably thanks to people like me and Mike Leach, and it says outstanding taxes passed, too. Either we have two sets of books, or it doesn't match the MIS. I went to Mike Taylor, and I said, Mike, what's going on here? Could it be that I'm wrong? He said, Brenda, he said, we collect data. It's the tax department that gives it. So I want to give you some, some interesting information, because we'll be going forward with this. REI, which is real estate property taxes, in Ms. Booker's regime that came in 2007 late, through 2011, there's approximately 2,700 parcels that are accounts that is counted year by year. So some, one parcel could have three years if they're backdated three years. So it's one account per year. And it's over, let's see, 600, 6,000 accounts, over $2 million. But the, the most interesting is the RMB. In the presentation to the board, Ms. Booker said, we block RMB. And for those that don't know, that's vehicle. Well, the best I can calculate, and we're putting this in front of an accountant, is 25,000-plus accounts have not been blocked. And it's probably close to a, maybe almost close to $2 million. Then we have business. If you don't collect taxes, business guys, on the first six months, those guys are out of, out of business. Since Ms. Booker's been here from '07 to '11, not counting '12, you're looking at somewhere over 800 accounts. That's close to a half a million dollars. For individual, which is mobile homes that may or may not exist, because on one database, Tucker Farms owes a million dollars. And I believe if you were to give that bill to him tomorrow, he'd have a stroke. River Creek Subdivision on one set of the databases owes 800,000. I called them, and I said, hey, y'all, you're really in deep, deep trouble. And they laughed, and they said, we have paid receipts. So you have a data problem, but since Ms. Booker's been here, you're close to 6,000 accounts. What I'm trying to say to you before we do go public is I invite you to a meeting. I am a profiler of sorts. It's called evidence. Data doesn't lie, people do. But what I can tell you is this, and wind up. When you have Ms. Booker give you evidence that says this is the condition of your county, and you have a county manager that says, we collect, we can't collect all the taxes. We don't have the time. We don't have the staff. So we go after the lowest hanging fruit. August the 22nd, Ms. Ward was present, but three citizens were present. What I would suggest is that every report that Ms. Booker makes to you, she sign a notarized sworn statement that says it's correct data. Because when this goes forward, we either have two sets of books, guys, or we have cookbooks, okay? Thank you. God bless.
Okay. Uh, the next item on our report is, on our agenda, is our items for report. And we'll have the managers report first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several items to put the board on. First one concerns the next meeting dates. For the month of April, the schedule has April 1st, April 15th. When we created the schedule for this calendar year, we didn't take into account the fact that the March meetings were gonna be on the 2nd, 4th, rather than the 1st and 3rd Mondays. I'm proposing that the board cancel the April 1st meeting, because that is actually one week from today. It's also the Monday after Easter weekend. If the board is in agreement to that, um.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we cancel the April 1st meeting.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Okay, any discussion? Let's vote.
So then your, your next meeting will be April 15th at 6:00 PM. And then in May, May, Monday, May the 6th at 9:00 AM, getting back to your regular 1st and 3rd, 1st Monday of the month and 3rd Monday of the month. Item B, I think this was announced at the last meeting on March 11th, but the Committee 100 will be holding its annual meeting on March 26th. And there will be a, um, presentation concerning the insight study, which is a economic development study being performed right now within the county. They'll be doing a SWAT portion presentation on that. And SWAT is your, your strength, weakness is opportunities and threats type of presentation. And if anybody's interested in attending, feel that the clerk knows. We can have you accounted for that, that meeting. Item C is a follow-up to your March 11th board meeting, at which you took action regarding a local bill for trapping season. And staff has followed up on that and followed up with the General Assembly in terms of bill writing, to have a bill drafted, but nothing's been introduced. And my understanding is there is some sentiment to readdress this in this meeting. I will say that we do have Milton Jones in the audience, who is the Wildlife Resources Conservation Officer. Did talk to him and had a good meeting with him Friday. And I also would like to thank him for his years of service. My understanding is he's retiring June 30th, 1st, 1st, after 28 years of service. So I'd thank him for his service to the citizens of Pitt County.
Mr. Manager, let me address that for just a minute. I have had some, several phone calls on this. I spent considerable time talking with Mr. Jones about this issue. I have since talked with Mr. Davenport, who brought this up to our board initially through Commissioner Johnson. And the, he had, he is recommending that we just simply drop this and not pursue it any further. I've talked with my fellow board members, had conversations with them, and you are in agreement with that. So I would entertain a motion, since we have it in our records from our last meeting, that we pursue this. I would now entertain a motion that we no longer pursue extending the length of time for trapping season.
I would so move it, Mr. Sir.
Have a motion, and I have a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Jones, I believe that you all are boy, and I, and I agree with this. We don't know enough about it. What the fox or what the coyote will do for the baby turkeys and doves. And I personally, as one, as a landowner, and very much interested in hunting, preservation of preserving these turkeys and so forth. Could you all kind of, we could go ahead and do what, Mr. Chairman, you're talking about? But through your organization, don't you all run a study to advise counties such as this as to the way to go? Because you're in that, we trust you all, so to speak. I do.
Have that committee to the microphone, please. Thank you.
Mr. James, that would be more of the biologist that would do those types of surveys. As an enforcement officer, I'm just here to try to give you some guidelines on the enforcement of it and where the local law stands at this time.
Well, I know I was appointed on the committee several years ago pertaining to hunting.
Yes, sir.
And whenever you talk about hunting anything, you know, you, you're talking about the fox hunting. Where you say, you don't want to mess with a little fox, but yet those little foxes get out there and eat all these little birds and everything. It's, it's wildlife, wildlife, so to speak.
Yes, sir. We, we have an ecosystem, and that's what it's called. We have predators that are gonna do those kinds of things.
I kind of, I'm a little different than most of them. I don't mind taking the heat. I fox hunt more than most of the fox hunters, I guarantee you. When I was a little boy, I used to go with the fox packs. So I know, and, but at the same time, we need some way that we can kind of balance the system out. And I'm for fox hunters, but at the same time, I don't want those, I don't want those coyotes and those foxes. I've got a bunch of cows. I don't want them on land, and we do a lot of hunting. And I've got one state man that's a mile of fighting his traps on the land that I got, beavers and so forth. And at certain times, he traps the fox. But they use these foxes primarily in the fox pens and things such as that. That's who gets them. Of course, the fox hunter knows that.
Yes, sir.
But in other words, there's no way that we could say have somebody that wouldn't cost us anything to let us know how we stand here in Pitt County. Because these other counties must know something. And that I don't know, see?
NC State is doing surveys on this type of stuff pertaining to predators and small game. They would be a good source to go to, to tell you what impact predators have on small game, with habitat loss and not habitat loss. Their study pretty much revealed that as long as the habitat was there, predators were a minor impact. Because of farms being mowed clean now and small game not having avenues of escape or quail not having the ways to get out into the field to feed, they have to stay more thick places. It's now quail will fly. In my experience, I've seen as an officer, they will fly late in the evening from a cut-down to a field to feed and then back to the woods. They have no way to get out there anymore. Predators are always gonna be an issue with anything, but those foxes, coyotes, we're not really supposed to have. However, we can't do anything about the winged birds of prey, because they're gonna be also federally protected. They're gonna take more of these types of animals than probably anything else.
Well, you know, I've been told a long time ago, you pick your fights that you can win. We can't probably win all that. You know where I'm coming from. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I go with you. But I'm telling you, we need to look at that gentleman. I don't care what you're, I'm right, you might not agree with me, but we got to protect all of them that we possibly can. And I don't know enough about it, and neither does anybody at this board know enough about it to take and to say this is the right way to go. And I thought maybe by getting advice from you all, that we would get a direction.
What we did discover, we're talking to Mr. Elliott and Mr. Rhodes, was statute, because we have a 30-day gun season on foxes in Pitt County, beginning on December 1st. When the trapping season starts on January the 2nd, during that month, you can also shoot those foxes as well. So basically, we thought we only had a 30-day gun season. We're actually, we have a 60-day gun season by statute.
And, and I don't like traps, because it catches dogs, too, you know? That's, that's my main concern. Okay, I'm through.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, as you well know, the, uh, the county attorney has considered what's happened and made contact in other counties, what they've been going through. And at the moment, that's, I think, the best we know is what other counties in North Carolina have done. And I believe the conclusion that the good work of the, uh, chairman of this board has done, that the best thing to do with the information we've been able to gather is to approve this motion. And, uh, and in the future, if we get additional information, then we can, uh, address this once again.
Okay. Thank you very much. We've had a motion and a second. Let's vote. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Appreciate your input. Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a few other items. Item D is covering National County Government Month, which will be the month of April next month, in the theme of the NACO, which is the National Association of Counties. For counties, it's smart justice, creating safer communities. Just a few of the things that have been considered for Pitt County by our, our local planning committee made up of different county employees. Our courthouse tours, possible detention center tour. We'll have interviews on WITN with key county personnel. They have set booths, booths at local events, and maybe tweeting weekly safety tips. So there's a few things we'll be looking at. Item E, remind the board about the Shepherd Memorial Library Breakfast for Elected Officials, Monday, April 29th at 8:00 a.m. Item F is to remind you and the public about the different boards that the county is currently advertising for in terms of seeking applicants for consideration by using board commissioners. We have the Region Q Workforce Development Board, the Aiden Planning Board, the Mid East Commission, and the Greenville Board of Adjustment. Have a few other things that are not on here. Want to make the board aware that, um, in the CBN, which is the Crystal Broadband Network franchise area, which is, I believe, Simpson, Grimesland area, that the residents of that area have been notified by letter by CBN that their cable service would end as of March 25th, which is today. I've been in contact with Southern Link. Even though the CBN franchise was a franchise that you, as board of county commissioners, issued for that area, I think that it ends September 16th, I believe, coming up. Southern Link, at the same time, has a state franchise over almost that entire area itself. They're in the process of hanging cable, laying cable, per se, to serve the area. They will serve the majority of the area, but there will be some areas, outliers in the area that they cannot serve, because in their franchise agreement with the state, I think they have a rule of 20, 20 homes per, per mile. But they are in the process of getting that infrastructure put into place, and will be taking that over. At this point in time, we're not recommending any action with Crystal Broadband, broadband network. network. We have communicated with them and told them that it's, it's our desire to see them to stay up and operational through September, and try to give Southern Link the time to, to get the, the cabling in place. But in talking to, to Phil Oshlocker, it sounds like it's only going to be a matter of weeks before they actually have all the network in place anyway. So I want you to be aware of that in case your constituents were to call you or express any concern about that. Two other items real quick. One deals with mental health. The county's LME, which is your local management entity, which is ECEH, which is another acronym for East Carolina Behavioral Health. As you're aware, current state legislation requires a restructuring of the LMEs across the state in terms of the number of people, positions that can be held either by consumers, county commissioners, or, or the like. We have clerk of the board, Kimberly Hines, does a survey. We're trying to identify county commissioners on, on our board that meet certain attributes so that we can remain having a voting voice on the ECEH board. I know at this point, there's maybe one board member that may have a, a tie-in to one of those attributes, whether it's an attorney, or somebody who's worked in the hospital setting, or if you have a relative who is a consumer of, of the mental health, substance abuse, developmental disabilities type attributes that they're looking for. If the board is willing, we can open that up to see if there are people in the community that could fill that attribute if there's not going to be a board member. So I'm seeking some, some direction from you as a board. I think the ECEH would like to have this lined up before the fall. We are seeking legislation in the General Assembly that would allow LMEs of a certain size. Obviously, we have a 19-county LME. There's one in the mountains, I believe, is 15 counties. And we're trying to get a, a local act or a statewide act, legislation that would exempt us. But in talking to the folks in Raleigh that we've talked to, especially through the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, they're saying that the chance of that happening is fairly low at this point, that there's, there was a lot of effort that went into the legislation that downsized the LMEs, and that it would probably meet a lot of resistance to try to get an exemption. Right now, there is an exemption for counties over a population size of 1,250, I believe is the threshold, which we're basically probably looking at a Wake County, Charlotte-type, type arrangement. So that's where we stand on that.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
That I think, right now, we, do all of the groups in North Carolina have at least one or more county commissioners that are voting members?
I would say with Pitt County, I believe Pitt County has the largest LME board with 19 different counties, and we have the ability for a county commissioner to be represented from all 19 counties on the ECEH.
So you can appoint, and they could be voting members presently? But what they're saying now is they're going to reduce the number?
Correct.
Hours would be reduced from 19 to... Do we know what it says in the bill?
The way the legislation is written, it's effective October 1st, 2013. The, the new law limits the size of boards to 21 members and has 13 prescribed positions. So with 13 positions, those would either have to be, of the 13 of the 21, you'd have to have some county commissioners who have, who hold the attributes.
Right.
And again, those range anything from healthcare administration experience, financial expertise, insurance expertise, DSS, an attorney with expertise, again, in mental health, developmental disabilities, or substance abuse, a family member of consumer in any of those three areas, or just a plain consumer could be of those three areas, or administrative hospital providing those type of services. So with 13 of the 21 being people in those prescribed positions, the, the difference between the 13 and the 21 would be all that's available for the 19 counties to divvy up. So really, what you're looking at is probably with 19 counties, a rotational basis where every X number of years, a county may have a voting slot on the LME that represents the catchment area for the, the service area. With Pitt County having the largest population of any of the 19 counties, and on a per capita basis, putting the most money, local money into the LME operation, it is really important imperative that we have a voice at the table to be able to have a say in things.
But that's not a guarantee the way it's being set up.
Mr. Hammond, did you have a question?
Yeah, I want to ask God what happened to our report from Mr. Wilson?
That's what I, I bring that in.
They, that's on your consent agenda. We still get that? That's still required by state law, the LME quarterly fiscal monitoring report. They do not have to do that in person. Now, if you would like them to come and do a face-to-face, they can do that, but the law just says it has to be presented, not how.
Well, very informative when he was coming.
Actually, Roy Wilson retired probably a year or two ago, but Lisa Wainwright is, is their new CO, but she or someone from her staff would be happy to come and present that if you would like.
Commissioner James?
You know, we started out with just a few counties. We kept adding on to them. Remember that, Mr. Manager, don't you?
Yes, sir.
All right. He needs to come back here, as big as this is now. And we got, we got rid of mental health. I don't know what was, you know, we didn't want to, but we did.
Yeah, we divested as required by the state.
By the state. But we need, we need a county commissioner, I think, to see what is going on, and to make sure that our people are being looked about. I really believe that. You know, if you've got a group out there, they're getting millions of dollars, and they are. And nobody's looking at them, you know what? Somebody's going to be left out. And I've learned this, that if you don't ever say anything, you're not going to get anything. You say, well, Mr. James, you run your mouth too much. I do sometimes. But I get things stirred up, and a lot of times, I get something done. But I think that we need to be, have them to come here and talk. And I don't understand, and I know I understand it more than some, because I do go to some meetings and, and on the social service, of course, that can bleed a dip, but then it kind of goes along the same way. But we need to get them here and to ask them some questions, and to make sure that the people here in Pitt County are being cared for as they ought to be, and that there are millions of dollars being wasted. And we, we know that.
We can have them come and address us. We will do that.
Right.
But the question, the question the manager has right now is, do we want to have a county commissioner on that board, and we have a county commissioner that meets the qualifications? Is that, is that what you said? That meets some of the qualifications?
Yes, there's one county commissioner that has a family member that would allow them to...
So that would be a good one to have on.
Is that county commissioner willing to serve? Or have you addressed?
That clerk. Put you on the spot.
I don't think so. I, I think they would prefer not to.
Okay, so...
Have they been asked?
Yes.
So do we have...
I don't know how.
Can we appoint a county commissioner that we want to represent us and our section, even if they may not have one of those qualifications? Can we do that?
You can appoint them, but I think that the question is, since there's so limited number of spots, more likely, the ECEH will come up with a rotation schedule of when counties will rotate in and off, because there's just not enough slots.
Commissioner Johnson.
Since I'm the, the current member serving on the East Carolina Behavioral Health Board, it is my opinion that where we lost was in the elections, and, and we need to be lobbying members of the General Assembly to change the law. And when we go to Raleigh and lobby the members of the General Assembly, Mr. James, we need for you to go and, and lobby these members of the General Assembly. That's where the, the power now lies with Wake County, Mecklenburg County, Guilford County, where they're major populations. They drew the law to their benefit, not to ours. And they need to change the law. The, the, the law does not even benefit the mountain counties. And you combine the mountain counties' representation in the General Assembly and, and the eastern counties in the General Assembly, and we still don't have enough power to get the law changed. But that's where we need to try to get the law changed. The proposal that we made at the last meeting of this board was a first step. And we just need to be heard in Raleigh for those who have a vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's echo some of what Dr. Johnson said, and that is the I-85 corridor did decide this law, and that's who we're going to be up against to change it. The, the west is with us, the east is with us. We have to peel some of those in the middle out. I met directly with two of our House representatives. I think we might, may have more success in the House than in the Senate, since this is where it originally, this is where it came, the House, the, the Senate's where it came out of, so I think they're a little more defensive over it. The reception I got from our senator on it was a little more lukewarm, whereas the House members were a little more accommodating to it. And, and what I told them was that we, we put the most in, and we also provide the most services. And there may be a period of years where we don't have representation on that board. The mountain counties are in the exact same boat, and I think you'll see something come out of the Senate from the west. Maybe we can have something come out of the House from the east and meet somewhere in the middle and get this accomplished. But something that the association and our executive committee is working on, our first vice president is working the senator from the west. I'm working our House members from the east, so that hopefully we can get some movement on this. But I encourage everybody, because this is an important issue and you feel strongly about it. I believe County Assembly Day is going to be May 22nd or 21st. I'll, I'll give the definite date for you by the next meeting, and that we need to go over to those representatives. Both of our senators, all three of our House members will be in their office that day, and they need to see as many of us, not just from our county, but from the east, the west, and the Piedmont, and the smaller counties are going to lose representation. We need to be in their office. They, they get the paper resolutions, but, you know, we all know, sitting here, it's harder to say no face-to-face, so we need to make that trip in May. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Tonight, I'm, I'm not sure that this is the time for us to decide whether we want a commissioner, excuse me, to nominate a commissioner to serve or to appeal to the public? Because we've talked about, you know, the identities of the people that have to serve on these, because this was the way it worked when we had the mental health board here locally. So what I'm saying is, maybe, you know, our next meeting, or our next meeting, we might, you know, decide what direction we want to go with that, whether we want to get that commissioner to serve or nominate, because it doesn't mean, I guess, if we put a name forward, doesn't necessarily mean that they'll have to take one from our county, does it?
No.
No.
But it was my understanding from our manager that if we did not have a commissioner willing and qualified to serve, then we need to open this opportunity up to the public to find someone who was willing and qualified to serve that would be from Pitt County.
Correct.
And that, that's what I'm saying. I think that the public is hearing it, and I think that we have some people out there who might be willing to serve as a voting member. So that'll give us, I mean, this is not our board, so they won't apply like we do, but they could certainly call the office and let, or call any of us and let us know whether they'd be willing to serve.
Okay. Commissioner McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Having served on this board in the past, Mr. Chairman, I'm very familiar with that as, as well as Dr. Johnson, who's doing a good job. I, I think it's critical that we do have a commissioner on the board. However, if that's not the case, I think that the commissioner should identify, as you well know, Dr. Johnson, there's qualified, qualified people in the community that I know, that I, but I think that appointment ought to be by a commissioner, a recommendation anyway, to bring to the commissioner, so that we can vote that person in.
Commissioner Johnson.
I, I, Mr. Chairman, I just don't believe at this particular time, it's the time for us to give up. If, if we made a recommendation according to the letter of the law that's now on the books, then I think that's giving up. I'm not willing to give up at this point. I think we need to try to get the law changed. And the, the composition of the current LME, East Carolina Behavioral Health, will outvote Pitt County every time. And we, we don't need to be in an adversarial relationship with the other members of East Carolina Behavioral Health. We need to be working together with them. And, and these other counties realize that the law needs to be changed, and that's where we need to zero in on, I believe, at the present time.
Mr. Manager, may I say one more thing? We have, you know, I've been involved in mental health for many, many years. We've got people, citizens in Pitt County, that are dedicated. Their chairman was, were involved. And I believe when you've got one that's really dedicated, that family's involved in it, I believe they're going to do more. I really do, that any county commissioner, because we've had them in Pitt County now that has really dedicated their life on this mental health business. And I mean, they worked at it, but they kind of got out of it when they took, when the state took it over. But we, we really do, we, these people are still here, and their chairman's still there. Most of them are grown now, but they still have to cap on them. And they love them more than you can imagine. I know.
Okay.
But I don't know how to go about doing it, and Dr. Johnson's probably right, but I know we need to, we need to do something if we can.
Mr. Manager, what else do we need to do to help you with this challenge?
I would say, along with Commissioner Webb's comments, that we'll continue to work with the NCACC and our local delegation to see if we can't get a bill introduced. What, what the State Association is trying to do is get a, a bill introduced that would, that would have 12 counties or more would be exempted from having to comply with October 2013 law to reduce the size of the LMEs. In the meantime, if the board has any ideas of a person, whether it's an existing county commissioner or somebody in the community, we can kind of take that into account, but not give up, like Dr. Johnson says, to say that, that the fall, October, is what we're, they're going to have to fall under in terms of a, a framework.
And in the meantime, Commissioner Johnson will still represent us on that board.
Correct.
Yes.
I'll start and I will do my best.
Mr. Chairman, one last item, real quick. The Public Information Office asked me to announce to you a couple of things. One is a good news item, that they have recently received a North Carolina City and County Communicators Award of Excellence in Citizen Participatory, Participation category. This is for the Pitt County Flag Redesign Contest, as you recall, that the board undertook. The second item is that our own Kiara Jones has been elected as president of the statewide organization for Director of Public Information Media Relations. And lastly, she was also, she was also currently serving as the National Association of County Information Officers 2013 Awards Chair, and is slated to be appointed to the organization's body, their board of directors in July.
Very good. Congratulations. Okay, the next item.
Yes, sir.
Next item is our monthly financial report, and Mr. Holder will come forward and present that.
Good evening, Commissioner. Yes. Commissioners, before you and in your agenda packet, you'll have our monthly financial report as of February the 28th. This report represents eight months. We're now two-thirds through the fiscal year. And I am pleased to report that we continue to recognize good financial trends, stable financial operations against our preset budget. Revenues have been collected at a rate of 77.1% of anticipated revenues, and we have spent at a rate of 64.8% of our budgeted expenditures. And just keep in mind, we're currently at 66.67% of the fiscal year. So with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Holder? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I made one more comment. You skipped that F there on the boards for the county that's being advertised.
No, he mentioned them.
He mentioned, but I wanted to bring one thing out. We have a board to the advisory, nursing, healthcare, and I'll try to bring it out. That one needs volunteers also. And it is, really, they need to, we need to serve that. We have a lot of senior citizens in Pitt County. And by you walking into those nursing homes, it, it has an effect upon them. I'm telling you, it does. And I think we need to stress to the citizens here in Pitt County, you're needed to volunteer to go to these nursing homes and to go with this group. And what they do, of course, they divide that into two or three, so that we can go into all the nursing homes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move for acceptance of the items of consent.
Second.
We need to finish your last vote first.
Do I have a second that we approve the items for consent?
A second.
It's okay, got a second? Any discussion? Okay, thank you. We will now move to our items for decision, and the first one is a request to use the fund balance of Pitt Community College and...
No, we approve that.
A second.
Okay. Motion second. Any questions or discussion? You've read the report, you see what it's for, so let's vote. Thank you. Okay, the next item is our appointment to our Pitt County Board of Adjustments. As you recall, we moved Annie Holder up to a regular member, so now we have to appoint an alternate. There, I believe there were three applicants. Do I have a motion that we appoint one of them?
Mr. Chairman, I think we still, if no one has a strong feeling about a, the candidate in such an important position, that we really do need to have some input from this commissioner as to, this board of commissioners, as to who ought to fill that position.
I, I agree with you, and I was kinda thinking the same thing, Mr. Owens, because there was no one quick to speak up and nominate. So why don't we reassess this at our April meeting? Do I have any objection that we do that? Okay, and think about who we need to serve, and we have three applicants. If you know of someone in the community that would be good on that board, then solicit them to fill out an application. Okay? We will now move on to our next item, which is an appointment to the Pitt County Development Commission. You see the recommendation there. Our Dr. Hilbert, out at Pitt Community College, resigned her position and moved to another county, or I guess is moving. Anyway, we have to appoint someone to finish her unexpired term, and the recommendation is for Mr. Madry, who is also out at Pitt Community College.
So move.
I have a motion second and discussion? Let's vote. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is appointments, two appointments to the Pitt Community College Board of Trustees. The recommendation there is we reappoint Walter Williams and Mr. Paul Davenport. If we do that, but in both of those cases, we will be making an exception. So what is your pleasure?
I say move.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Let's vote. Thank you very much.
We need to finish... Okay.
That was the last one.
That was the last one. This will now be the next one.
Next item is appointments to the Animal Cruelty Investigators. You see those on page 116. Five of those are staff members and one is a volunteer. What is your pleasure?
I say move that we make those appointments.
Have a second to that motion? Okay, motion second and discussion? Let's vote. Thank you. The next item is a removal from the MidEast Commission due to lack of attendance. What is your pleasure?
No, we'll allow it.
I second it.
Okay, motion second and discussion? Okay, thank you. We do have a closed session. It was added to our agenda. I'm Adam Attorney. Will you take us in the closed session, please?
Yes, it has been suggested that this board go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A1, to prevent the disclosure of information that has privileged or confidential pursuant to the laws of the state under subsection three, to consult with an attorney employed by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and under a four, to discuss, I'm sorry, under a five, concerning the acquisition of real property.
Okay, thank you. Do I have, you wanna take a five-minute break? Okay, take a five-minute break, then we'll come back and accept a motion to go into closed session.